Here.
Dine.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Pennington.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Just to note, Mr. Williams is attending the meeting tonight virtually. All of you should have received copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting from July the 19th. Do I have a motion?
I'll subdue.
Motion by Mr. Bates.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson. Arnold. Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
The Idem Simling Monthly Report was filed on July 28, 2021. Corporation Council has a further mandate.
All right. Any committee or board reports? All right, hearing none, then this is opportunity for public comments, and we will start with our mayor, Mr. Mark Fox.
Thank you, Mr. President, Council members. One of the thank you for the opportunity. Tonight, we have the opportunity to swear in quite a few new firefighters from the Fire Department for part-time, full-time, and some promotion. First, I want to address families, though. Can't tell you what it means to me, to the council, and especially to our firefighters, to have you here present today for the swearing-in ceremony and speak. When people come to work for the city of Greenwood, they not only come to work for the city, but they join the family. The Fire Department is a family. We all act together as a family throughout the entire city. And what that means is if they are your family, you also now are our family. So I want to welcome you to the family of the city of Greenwood, but I want to encourage you that if you ever see any problems, because the jobs of the firefighter, the police officers, and all city employees can sometimes be very stressful, can cause problems, can cause issues. If you see those, reach out to us, because we're here to support. What we want to do is make sure that we bring your family in, and we train them, we make them the absolute best they can be, and we want to send them home every day in better condition than when they left that morning. So if you have any questions, any concerns, whatever, feel free to call us. Let us know, and we would be more than happy to try to reach out, take care of those people. We want to keep our family healthy and whole all the time, and we want to thank you for this opportunity. Chief Parker?
So the first group that we have tonight are new full-time firefighters. We're going to call their name, and they're going to come up, hopefully, right? James Armstrong. Kevin Crane. Andrew Emery. Mark Kreese. Nicholas Hatfield. Brian Hutchinson. Michael Lloyd. Alex Shidler. Nathaniel Young.
Gentlemen, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
to the position of park position of probationary firefighter EMT.
Position of probationary firefighter EMT.
for the Greenwood Fire Department.
For the Greenwood Fire Department.
on August the 2nd, 2021.
On August the 2nd, 2021.
Swear that I will obey
Swear that I will obey.
and enforce
and enforce.
all the laws
all the laws.
of the United States
of the United States.
the state of Indiana
the state of Indiana.
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
and I will obey
and I will obey.
all of the lawful orders
all of the lawful orders.
of my superior officers
of my superior officers.
and faithfully discharge the duty
and faithfully discharge the duties.
of said office
of said office.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Welcome.
You guys can please move together just a little bit.
If the family members who come forward that are going to pin the firefighters?
All right, at this time, I present to you the Greenwood Fire Department's full-time recruit class of 2016. Next are part-time firefighters, and the part-time firefighters, there's two groups here. And unfortunately, because of COVID last year, some of them did not, were not able to be sworn in at the public meetings. So we have a couple of different groups of part-time firefighters. So if you would, please come forward and I call your name. Andrew Huber. Jackson Rumble. Michael Chimsfrot. And Anthony Wheat.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andrew Huber.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
to the position of part-time firefighter EMT.
to the position of part-time firefighter EMT.
for the Greenwood Fire Department.
for the Greenwood Fire Department.
on August the 2nd, 2021.
on August the 2nd, 2021.
Swear that I will obey
swear that I will obey.
all of the laws
all of the laws.
of the United States
of the United States.
the state of Indiana
the state of Indiana.
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
and the rules and regulations
and the rules and regulations.
of the Greenwood Fire Department.
of the Greenwood Fire Department.
and I will obey
and I will obey.
all of the lawful orders
all of the lawful orders.
of my superior officers
of my superior officers.
and faithfully discharge my duties
and faithfully discharge my duties.
of said office
of said office.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, whoever may be pinning these firefighters, please come forward. You may pin the firefighter. Congratulations. We got one more, which is promotion to lieutenant. So Justin Lierway, please come forward.
As I said earlier outside, he says the best in the land. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Justin Lierway.
Having been appointed
Having been appointed.
to the position of lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department.
to the position of lieutenant for the Greenwood Fire Department.
on August the 2nd, 2021.
on August 2nd, 2021.
Swear that I will obey
swear that I will obey.
and enforce
and enforce.
all of the laws
all the laws.
of the United States
of the United States.
the state of Indiana
the state of Indiana.
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood
the ordinances of the city of Greenwood.
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
and the rules and regulations of the Greenwood Fire Department.
and I will obey
and I will obey.
all of the lawful orders
all of the lawful orders.
of my superior officers
of my superior officers.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
and I will faithfully discharge the duties.
of said office
of said office.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
And at this time, I'd like to ask Justin's wife, Dana, to come up and pin the lieutenant. Congratulations, Lieutenant Lierway. Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, Chief Parker, I want to thank you for allowing the council to be a part of this. We appreciate what the Fire Department does and keep our city safe. So thank you very much to you, your officers, and all you remain. Thank you.
And we can exit.
I was going to say, they're welcome to stay.
But I warn you.
But obviously, we understand that they want to leave. All right, continuing with the council meeting. This is opportunity for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. If you are here tonight, wish to address the council about something on the agenda tonight, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit. And if you're online, you're also welcome to speak up and give us your name and address. So anyone? All right, hearing none, then moving on. Ordinances and resolutions under first reading, ordinance number 2127.
In order to amend Greenwood Municipal Code as amended, Chapter 3, Article 1, Division 2, Regulations Governing the Common Council to add Section 321, Established from Procedures to Permit Common Council Members to Participate in Public Meetings by Electronic Means and to amend Section 321 regarding meetings sponsored by Dine Gibson.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on the council? Mr. Dine?
Mr. President, I would like to amend the ordinance to allow 50% of the meetings in one calendar year to be done virtually. With the rising COVID virus again, and then with other people previously who've had to have some treatments and deal with illnesses, I think that would give us a full council, and it would be fair to everyone involved, and that way everybody's kept.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Dine to amend the ordinance 2127 a second by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on that amendment?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Your amendment is to allow individual meeting members to miss up to 50%, not to have the rules applied only 50% of meetings.
No, no, 50% of the meetings.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe the state law requires us to have a quorum present in person, which would be at least five of us. And the state law does allow an individual member to miss up to 50% of the meetings. So that would be in guidelines with the state law, so. Any other discussion on your proposed amendment? Hearing none, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2127.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance 2127 is amended on a vote of nine to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance 2127 as amended?
Mr. President, I would like to propose another amendment. With the 72-hour notice requirement, we talked about that a lot at the last meeting, and the reason given was that the clerk needs to have 72-hour notice, which amounts to five days, in order to provide the public notice of the electronic means for public attendance and observation. It seems to me that once the clerk has provided the public notice, say one of us gave five-day notice, if the second member of the council becomes sick on the day of the meeting and would like to participate electronically, it doesn't seem like it's necessary at that point for the second member to also have provided 72-hour public notice, because the public notice requirement's already been satisfied.
Okay.
So the amendment would be, say, down in bottom of page one, where it says this subsection does not apply to any meeting called under Indiana Code 5-14, et cetera, to address an emergency. The amendment would be comma, or to any meeting for which the clerk has already provided public notice of the electronic means for public attendance.
Okay, so as long as...
As long as the clerk has provided the public notice, a member could call that day and say, I'm going to attend it electronically.
That's okay. It would be nice, for example, Mr. Williams sent me a note this afternoon, because since we do have to have a quorum present, chances of us, five of us not showing up for meetings probably pretty slim, but it would be nice to know ahead of time. So everybody understand the proposed amendment?
Once the electronic, once the clerk publishes electronic notice for whatever reason, notice to the public that we're going to have a meeting electronically, then subsequent members don't need to provide additional, they don't need to meet the 72-hour notice requirement, because we're already, we're already ordered.
All right.
So David, if I understand, you're saying that once the, it's posted with the clerk, and that covers us?
It covers anybody.
I'll go second that, so we can continue the discussion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I have one question that came to my mind. What does that do for the situation when that can't be, I don't know, it can't be adhered to, or is there a possibility that, do we have to have five, I guess?
We have to have five in person.
Yeah, if you would not have five in person.
Then we would not, we would not have a quorum and could not have a meeting.
So would that conflict with that?
Well, no, I mean, wouldn't.
No.
No, really wouldn't, because we're going to, no matter what we do with this amendment, we have to have five people here. And if we don't, then we won't be able to have a meeting, so.
That's never happened.
No, yeah.
If the fifth person calls on the day of the meeting and says, I'm coughing and vomiting, you're not going to say, come in so we can have a forum.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, so. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, then roll call on the second amendment to ordinance 2127.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill. Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2127 is amended a second time on a vote of nine to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance 2127 as amended?
Question, I'm sick, give my 72-hour notice, I'm, whatever reason, healed just before the afternoon of the meeting or whatever, and I come to the meeting, does that create any situation or nothing? It's just?
Yeah, that's fine. All right, anything else? This does, as I've said a couple times, affect us directly in what we can and cannot do. So, and I believe it limits, you know, the things we can vote on, which is all by state law, so it's good that we, you know, understand it, so. All right, hearing no other discussion, then roll call ordinance 2127 as amended.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Ordinance 2127 as amended has passed first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2128.
In order to amend the text of Greenwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8, Traffic and Parking Regulations, Article 2, to amend Section 8.8 prohibiting truck traffic on certain streets to include portions of Honey Creek and Smokey Row Road, sponsored by Bates, Gibson, Hopper, Pennington, and Williams.
Do I have a motion?
Subdue.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion, ordinance 2128? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2128, second reading.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Ordinance 2128 passes second reading, nine to zero. New business, introduction, new ordinances or resolutions, ordinance 2129.
In ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 10 of the Greenwood Municipal Code as amended to amend the provision of the consumer fireworks regulation regarding dates of use, sponsored by Pennington.
Anybody want to talk about this one?
I'll go. I can talk about it.
Okay.
So this is the same adjustment today that we talked about when the fine passed. It's essentially moving the start date from the 24th to the 29th, and then the end date from the 11th to the 9th coincide with state regulations and then the regulations used by other surrounding cities and counties.
All right. Any questions at this time? All right, ordinance 2130.
In ordinance amending the credit card use policy to allow the city controller to increase card limits, sponsored by Gibson.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, so basically, this is allowing us to raise the credit card limits for some of the people that do purchasing for different departments on a regular basis. Right now, the way it reads, we can do temporary increases for them a month at a time. This would allow for those people who are getting regular purchasing, especially with the online purchasing now for different departments, a lot of times you see it in some of the street department and parks and rec, where they're using online purchase stuff and we're needing to increase the limit every month. There's the whole administrative process that goes with that, sending their paperwork, getting signatures from department head, myself, and the deputy mayor. So it's just, this would allow for some of those to just be permanently increased to match what they're actually using.
Mr. Wright, about how many of these do you have average a month?
Um, it depends on the month, because when the pool's in session, there'll be more, but generally, we'll have four or five people a month that are submitting them regularly, and then if somebody's traveling, we might get one or two additional, so that they can book out a dollar or something.
I would like to move for suspension of the rules through first reading to help them get some of their extra paperwork.
A motion by Ms. Gibson for suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance 2130. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion on suspension? Hearing none, then roll call on suspension of the rules through first reading on ordinance 2130.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Rules are suspended through first reading on a vote of nine to zero. Any discussion on ordinance, or do I have a motion on first reading from ordinance 2130? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second by Mr. Dine. Any discussion? Any other questions? Hearing none, then roll call, ordinance 2130, first reading.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pennington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Ordinance 2130 passes first reading, nine to zero. Ordinance 2130, one.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
In ordinance vacating platted sanitary sewer and drainage and utility easements located within the replat of Schwartz Crossing commercial subdivisions sponsored by Campbell.
I want to, you're welcome to your podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Snyder, CrossFit Engineers, here on behalf of Schwartz Crossing Development, LLC. The petition that we filed was to vacate platted easements in the commercial subdivision, Schwartz Crossing in the southeast corner, Stones Crossing and 135. The request is received, favorable recommendations from both the Board of Local Works and the Plan Commission, with the condition that the petition or the ordinance is received is recorded at the same time as the replat of the subdivision. The easements in question are all platted, but empty. There are no utilities in any of those easements. The project was temporarily put on hold after plan approvals were received, and since that time, we have, the developer has come to an agreement with another developer, and that's resulted in the need to redefine some of those previously platted easements, where the process of going through plan approval, secondary plan approval, et cetera, with the planning division as we see.
All right, any questions? All right, thank you very much. Ordinance 21- Ordinance 2132.
In ordinance amending the 2021 salary ordinance, Common Council Ordinance Number 2031, to increase the assistant city attorney's salary sponsored by Diamond Hill.
Mr. Wright.
Evening, councilors. Uh, this, this ordinance was brought forward by my office in a request to raise the ord, the salary of the assistant city attorney. We did a study with AIM to see what other assistant city attorneys are currently paid at, and we, I don't know if y'all know this, but we lost a survey to another city just north of us. We would like to ramp the assistant city attorney salary to that one that is in line with the other cities of our size that could pay them, and so we could keep those people here in Greenwood and offer them a salary that's worthy of their rank.
All right, any questions from the mayor? All right, thank you. All right, miscellaneous business. This is an opportunity for members of the audience, to, members of the public, to address the council concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you were here tonight, wish to do so, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online. All right, hearing none, seeing none, then moving on, miscellaneous business for the council. I do have something. I sent an email out to all of you earlier, um, a couple weeks ago after our last meeting. Jonathan Myers, uh, has contacted us, and they're forming a meet and confer committee, and I believe, um, as the city ordinance says, that a discussion team, uh, needs to be appointed by the council. In the past, we've always had, it's been all council members, but I don't believe it has to be council members. I did ask if any of you were interested in serving on the meet and confer committee. Three of you have at least expressed a willingness to do so, and those three are Brad Pendleton, David Hopper, and Bob Dine. But we're open to nominations, or, you know, if somebody else would like to do that, but I assume you nominate yourself. But we need to appoint three people to that committee. They, they've already picked their members, and I'm not sure how that process works, but, uh, they've already picked their members, and we need to assign some people from the council.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate the three people, the question that you just announced.
All right, we have a nomination for Mr. Brad Pendleton, Mr. David Hopper, Mr. Bob Dine, from, uh, Mr. Ron Bates. Does that have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lexi. Any other nominations? All right, move all nominations be closed, and since we have one member attending virtually, I believe we'll need to do a roll call vote on the, uh, this nomination, so roll call on, on, uh, appointing Brad Pendleton, David Hopper, and Bob Dine to the meet and confer committee.
Lexi.
Aye.
Pendleton.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Dine.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Uh, you three are appointed on a vote of nine to zero, so thank you. I'm sure, I'll let, um, Mr. Myers know tomorrow, and I'm sure he'll be in touch with you about that, so. Anything else from the council?
Mr. Chairman, do we have a hard copy of the ordinance, uh, 2128 to sign tonight? Because we have through second reading on it.
I don't know. Do we have ordinance 21, uh, yes, we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just making it way, it's making it way.
I'll sign it. Are they here? Anything else from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. I just want to, um, express my appreciation. It seems like more recently I've had need to contact, uh, various directors in departments because of something that's, that's happened or that I've been made aware of. One of those was when they, um, were doing the resurfacing in Madison Avenue, and there was just a drop-off of about four inches, and I contacted, um, Daniel, and he was on it, and it was late in the afternoon, it was like 3:30 on a Friday afternoon, and he was getting ready to go on vacation, and he took care of that and saw that it was taken care of, that people wouldn't be damaging rims and things of that nature. Had another situation that someone was, uh, doing some demolition and didn't have a permit, and they took care of that, and had the same thing with the police department. And I just think it's important, uh, for us to express our appreciation when people are so quick to resolve situations for people in our community.
And I would echo that, Steph, because I know I've talked to the Department Head not too long ago, and they were very responsive, and, uh, of course, I've got an opportunity to express my appreciation to them, but it was, it was resolved a little bit.
Good. I think our staff does a very good job, so thanks to all of them. Mr. Mayor, if you'd convey that, we appreciate it. All right, any other miscellaneous business from the council? All right, other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council?
None.
Controller? Mayor?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned.